13, 2022 at 7:00 PM to order. All members of this board are present with the exception of Selectman Kyra, who is unable to attend this evening due to a work obligation. He sends his regards to the board and certainly will be following up with myself and the manager on any outstanding items from tonight. At this time, I would kindly ask that you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will discuss the transmitting of Treasury warrants 202248, 202248A, 202248B, 202248C, 48A, 202249, 202249Wires, 49A, 202250, 202250Wires, and 50A. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor unanimous, thank you. At this time, I will go to the approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to take up. One is for December 31st, 2021, and one is for April 25th, 2022. Does anyone have any objection to taking these up together, or would it be the board's pleasure to take them up separately?
Together's fine.
Together's fine, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented for December 13th, 2021, and for April 25th, 2022?
Motion?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second, Mr. DePalma? Thank you. Motion's been made and it's been seconded. Do I have any discussion on these items? Hearing none, all those in favor unanimous, thank you. Moving on to our scheduled appointments, we have our 7 o'clock appointment with Mr. Paton. His first name is Jabran Khan, I believe, and it's Paton of Easy Pizza, Inc. It's a request to obtain a common victual license for property located at 101 Main Street in Wilmington. I'm going to turn it over to the manager to make some comments with regards to this appointment.
We received notice probably about 15 minutes ago from Mr. Paton that due to some unanticipated staffing issues, he is not able to be present this evening and has requested that his request be deferred, which the next opportunity would be the meeting of the 27th of June. So I would recommend that the board take no action and that we check back with him about his availability for the 27th of June and this be considered at that time.
Okay, at this time, I entertain a motion for the board to take no action on this appointment as itemized by the manager.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to our 7:10 appointment, I see that we have Ms. Carleen O'Brien here, who is the general manager for Redding Municipal Light Department, and Ms. O'Brien is here to discuss the efforts to replace the electrical station on Wildwood Street. Good evening, Ms. O'Brien, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll take a blank one. No. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
So if you'd mind, if you have a seat at the table, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you for having me. So, the bottom line here is, I know I gave you this estimated timeline and it goes into construction, civil construction stuff, but really the takeaway from this is that we've gone through a series of land that we've tried to purchase, several of them in the last few years, specifically in the Balladville area adjacent to the 115 transmission lines. We have one now that we've come closer than any of the previous ones. I just signed the letter of intent a month or so ago and we just signed the purchase and sale. So it's great news so far, and so we are looking at a purchase closing possibly September 2022, because right now, since I signed the purchase and sale, we're doing our due diligence, okay? And then you can see from the estimated timeline that we'll get into the land preparation, the local permitting with the town of Wilmington, the soil borings that we'll be into that, as well as finding out if there's any ledge in the area. The ISO transmission system impact, that's our ability to attach onto the transmission line, which we don't see any problems with that. Electrical equipment bids and delivery, we've got a span there, you know, big difference between, you know, writing the technical specs and then the delivery. There's a disclaimer at the bottom that's talking about some of the supply chain issues. So this is based on, you know, the estimates that we have right now on that type of equipment. Civil construction starting end of 2022, and commissioning plan acceptance testing, essentially late 2024 is when we're considering that we'll have the first pickup of Balladville Street and the Upton Drive, and subsequent to that, we'll have other load that we have to do some overhead construction in order to make those transfers over. So that's why you see the feeder transfers CY 2024 to CY 2026. So again, late 2024, we get all the equipment in time and everything, that's when we're picking up our first load, Balladville Street and Upton Drive area. So all great news, and we'll just, September can't get here quick enough. So the land is a pretty good size, we're hoping to have a small building on there with some storage, possibly smart grid with a couple of batteries, similar to what we have at the substation that we got the grant for in North Reading. And every time I see members of the TUE committee, I ask them that I'll be knocking on their door again for some more grant money, that would be great, in the substation. So I think it'll be a nice little project. And so the status of the existing one, Hameed and his team has done a great job with, you know, doing the maintenance on that, making sure that we have spare parts for our equipment, that they really is difficult to find because it's a unique configuration of wiring, so it's, as I told you before, it's not one that you can bring a mobile unit in for. And he's done a great job keeping that going, and so we think that it will be fine. Just a reminder, like, these substations, there's three of them, and the way you do electrical balancing is we don't see the lines of the towns, there's three substations and they're triangulated so that the flow goes between the three. So for example, like, the Reading substation feeds analog, so it's not one for one, there's no boundaries. And that allows us to provide the best contingencies in case of any type of feeder outages or things like that. So the engineers are constantly working on that, we've got all the different scenarios. So the load impact study, the preliminary one, they're still looking at that now, so we're fingers crossed and hoping that it'll go forward. So I think as we get closer, maybe you can have Hameed come back and give an update after the closing.
Great. So thank you for that, I appreciate the detailed presentation, and I know this is not your first of many conversations that you've had with the town in Board of Selectmen meetings going back many years. What I wanted to do and just kindly ask you, if you could just step back and maybe provide a little bit of a narrative overview as to how this came to be, just in case somebody at home is watching this and hasn't heard the evolution of how it's come to this timeline as to why you're transitioning Wildwood into a, the Wildwood location to another option.
Correct.
Maybe just give a little bit of a summary as to why you're looking to take that offline and start anew.
Okay, sure.
That would be helpful.
So in late in 2013, when I came on board, we did an assessment of all of the electric system in all four towns, all the substations, and we came up with a reliability plan that kind of prioritized things. After we were done with that comprehensive, actually hired a consultant to do it again to make sure that we had every single thing captured of what needed to be done, because it was a pretty significant amount of work for, you know, maintenance over the, over years, things had gotten pretty much to the point of a lot of things were at the end of their useful life, and such was the existing Wildwood Station. That sits on 20,000 square feet, which is not very big for a substation, especially these days, of which 10,000 square feet is empty and the substation's on 10,000 square feet. It sits nominally in wetland areas, and it is not in the area which would be the focus of the load growth in Wilmington, that would be in the Balladville area, you know. And so when we started looking for land, we looked in the Balladville area, I mean, at one point, Hameed and I were going, just walking down the transmission line, banging on people's doors and asking, because, you know, if a substation is a significant amount of distance away from the transmission line, that can add a couple million dollars very quickly, so having something. So we had, you know, I'm not going to get into different names, but you can imagine names in the Balladville area if you know where the transmission lines are, but there was some issues. One was an Article 97 issue on the assessors thing, we thought the land was owned by National Grid, and, you know, so we've had some issues going forward with, you know, finding the land and making it come to fruition, you know, whether it's, you know, not buildable or whether the owner decided not to sell, a couple of different reasons. So the existing substation, as I said, has been band-aided, if you will, in order to be able to make it through to this. We've put a lot of work into making sure that it stays reliable, and so now that we've found this land, I think this one's going to go through. You know, signing the letter of intent, of course, we've done that before, purchase and sale is a big milestone for feeling that this is going to be successful, and it'll be a huge benefit to the town of Wilmington for your load growth if that's, if economic development is, aside from what's already there, if you're entertaining more, will have a better, even a better capability of, with electrification coming down the pike as well, you know, all the heat pumps and EVs that are coming down. I see you get your new EV chargers outside. They look great. So, but we put them there to move them if you guys are going to move, right? Seeing the mobile.
We get time. Well, thank you very much, you know, for that update. To that point, it may be too soon to tell because this is futuristically down the line, but do you think that this will, aside, will it want to improve service, and then do you, is it too soon to tell how this may affect the rate that, you know, Wilmington residents will pay, or is it just too soon to call based on?
Well, first of all, the reliability is awesome, the best, so I don't think that can get any better. I think our customer service is really good. I've worked for, you know, IOUs, you know, when you call us, we're here very quickly, and I think the reliability of the entire system, you know, due to the RMLD team, has come a long way, things are up to code and compliance, and I'd say 99% of the, aside from this particular substation, we've addressed almost 100% of the reliability issues, and a lot of the equipment that has to be changed out, of course, if it's supposed to be changed over 20 to 30 years, we're kind of doing it all at once. So getting back into that staggering for normal maintenance for electric utility has to happen. But I mean, for the most part, you know, I think we're stable and I think your reliability is excellent. As far as the cost going up, because this was a substation that I thought we were going to build a couple of years ago and the land issue fell through, I had collected for this substation already, okay? So that's already in the capital budget.
Okay, that's great.
The rates had gone out, gone up last year a little bit, you probably already know this, but the rates will go up, they went up 4%, and that's for the operating side. Power supply, capacity, and transmission are pass-throughs, so that's not part of the up to 8% of net plant that we can make. It's one for one. So right now, transmission is going up, but aside from that 4% rate increase we did on the operating side last year, I'm not seeing a significant, but I think usage is up as well, as more people, you know, move towards electrification, whether they're going for an EV vehicle or heat pump, I think that their usage will go up and they'll see their bills start to raise because of the amount that they're using. But we just finished a cost of service study, so I'm not anticipating anything huge. I think because it's so volatile right now and because electrification is so new and sometimes you feel like it's going to come in quick and then it kind of slows, I think we'll probably do cost of service studies a little bit more often than three years, or at least we're building a model so that we can look at them. I mean, we look at them all the time, and I'm talking about a big model, and evaluating it on a regular basis so we can report if we see anything. So right now, just transmission is really going up. So I can have Greg give a presentation. Our annual report for last year is about to come out, so Jeff, you'll get a copy of that, lots of, you know, reliability accomplishments, but I think if you're interested in maybe a discussion on projection for the, like, the next 18 months, what's happening with the electric grid system. A big issue is the supply and demand and cost like that, so we've just actually had, and I'm not saying it's going to affect rates, but we did go to the cab and then the board because, for example, our transformer replacement, annual replacement was about 775,000, it went up to 1.9 million. And the delivery went from an average of about 16 to 20 weeks to 52 to 102 weeks. So we're keeping an eye on it, and so far, that's been the biggest ticket item, you know, so we're monitoring it. Like I said, nothing to report right now other than those things, just want you to, we want to keep an eye on this because of, you know, building and buying these large transformers and we're trying to, we just want this to hurry up with the purchase and sale and the closing so we can get this ordered and get in the queue.
I appreciate the update on that, just obviously with inflation costs and just the way of the world right now.
Right.
So what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, is I'd like to open it up to the board and to the manager to see if any of my fellow board members have any questions or comments.
Of course.
So I'm going to start to my left and work my way.
Dave, you've actually answered my question, I was wondering, you know, about Wildwood. I guess I'll just follow up with them. So when, let's say, you know, this all goes through, and what happens with the Wildwood? Does that get dismantled and removed?
I think what the plan right now is to just make it into a switching station until such time everything, all the feeders are transferred over, but I think they'll monitor the load growth. It won't become a substation, but sometimes just having the switching stations there in order to provide better contingency will be a benefit to the town. So I don't think there's any plans to remove everything, it might just take on a different function.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Finally, it's nice to see that you're moving forward with this. Question I have is, when you went to the town regarding the Balladville property, which we, you know, we found out it was a mess and, you know, it was corrected, but you had mentioned, I believe you had mentioned that there was going to be a battery circuit there, or?
Well, we're trying to put in another 10 megawatt hours of battery storage for both resiliency and for peak shaving, because when the ISO transmission's peak is coincident with our usage peak, the cost of generation goes way up, and when all the generators are operating, the ISO has to turn on some of the generators that may not be as clean. And so when we call for residents that sign up or commercial customers that sign up for our peak shaving program, we turn our, we have a small gas generator and then we have our batteries, so we run those and we capture coincident with the peak and it significantly reduces the cost. So we'll try to, we're going to try to fit another couple, I say couple, it's, they look like two roll-off containers of batteries, but it's 10 megawatt hours that we would release over a few hours to try to capture that peak.
So this property, this property that you're, you have the PNS for now, it would, you'd be able to put them there?
We're hoping, right now, the design layout is being done by the engineering firm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Bendel.
Yeah, we just add that, again, congratulations and appreciate this update. I would just say that at any point during this timeline, do you think that any residents may anticipate any difference in their service, not expecting any disruption? Glad to hear it. Good luck.
Yeah, no, they'll probably make before break when they do the transfers, I'm not anticipating that anybody. When they have to build the overhead construction for some of the other transfers in the future, I can't speak to that, but if there's going to be any kind of link or anything, I'm sure Hameed and his team will notify the customers and we'll make sure that it's, you know, it's published, but I'm not anticipating anything big. Sure.
I would just congratulate you for the effort, this has been a long, long-term effort and there's been a lot of roadblocks, but the persistence is paying off. I would just ask that, you know, as further developments come about, when the actual transaction takes place, if I could just be updated on that and any other milestones as they proceed, that would be helpful.
Of course.
I guess the other comment I would just want to offer is congratulations on your retirement, I know that's coming up here and.
Thank you.
Good luck in your future endeavors.
Appreciate that. Good luck.
Congratulations.
Yeah, this week, 42 years working full-time, not all, not all public service, but 27 years, yeah, I've enjoyed being a public servant, I really have, and serving the town of Wilmington, thank you for that.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, Jeff certainly gave a good segue to the conclusion, just wanted to thank you again on behalf of the board for being here. Very informative, as always, this is quite a timeline, congratulations on this and all of your success throughout your career. We appreciate it, I'm not just saying this because you're here, I will say, I happen to be in real estate as a profession, which is not relevant to my role here, but I tell people all the time that Redding Municipal Light is the best light company to have in terms of rates and just reliability to the points that you've already made, very little downtime, if anything, there has to be a major storm or something that's kind of an active god, if you will, and anytime there's an issue, we call, you know, it's, this crew's out there and it's right back up and running. So I think that the reputation is all for the good for Redding Light, and that's largely in part to all your efforts and that of your team, so thank you very, very much for being here, certainly appreciate the willingness to communicate with the manager and any milestones, and then also, we would definitely be interested in that other projection update.
In the rate, cost projection, right, yeah.
Sure, so if I could just kindly ask that you take that back to your team and maybe put it on someone's radar screen to kind of cross-communicate back and forth with us on any pertinent updates, we certainly would appreciate that.
Great, and I'll let Steph know, I'll pass along the kind words, thank, I'm sure they'll be happy.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you.
So we are running about two minutes ahead of schedule, that's excellent. At this time, I'd like to invite our town clerk, Elizabeth Longton, to the table to join us to talk about the change to the election precincts for September 6th of 2022 and November 8th of 2022. Good evening, Beth, how are you?
Good, good, thank you for having me. So I had sent out a memo to you all, since that time, Jeff has informed me that they are making headway with the project at the Wildwood School. They anticipate having water and sewage, but heat is unknown, it's unlikely, isn't that accurate? So I guess my request might have changed a bit due to that information, so we have two choices. We could go ahead with this plan so that we have consistency if they don't have the heat up and running in November, or we could have the primary with the Wildwood School and make a later decision regarding the November 8th election. We're open to both, Jeff and I talked today. It seems, you know, either option seems feasible to me, I think for consistency, so people aren't confused, it might be better to do it with both elections, but that choice is up to the board, so.
So just if I could comment in terms of a little background, so when this, as the date for the primary, which is September 6th, was looming at the time, it was shortly after, when we first began discussing this, it was shortly after the breach had occurred and it was still being assessed as to the scope of the damage and the challenges of remediating the site. And one of the things clearly we wanted to try to get ahead of is dealing with the prospect of not having the Wildwood available as a voting location, so that was what prompted the proposal that those two precincts be essentially melded into the Glen Road precinct and the Aboutwell. As Beth indicated in my conversation with George Hooper on the progress that's being made at the Wildwood, the septic tank has been installed, and Shelley Newhouse tells me that there's just some minor, a couple of minor issues that she doesn't anticipate an issue with, so the septic can be running soon. The electric, electricity poles had to be relocated early on, and so the electricity is not an issue. And then the water line, which there was, had to be disconnected, that has been, the water line's been replaced, so we do have water to the building, so it is conceivable that the primary could take place at the Wildwood. As Beth noted, I would also suggest that there's value in making the transition for the primary, serve as a test run, if you will, for the November election, the wild card, so to speak, at this point is that we know that the, there are two boilers in that school, one of them is in very difficult straining, it's going to have to be replaced. It has not at this point, and the question becomes whether we're going to have the ability to have reliable heat into the building, you know, for the November 8th election. So certainly the board has options here, I guess my suggestion would be that the board consider having the, executing the plan that we had proposed for the primary. As Beth noted in her memo, there will be cards going out to those impacted by the change. We would also anticipate if the board were to go in that direction, that not only would the notices go out in anticipation of the primary, but they would go out again in the fall as a reminder to folks for the November election.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the board just to see if anyone has any questions or comments.
I just, I agree, I think we should have taken it for the primary, because I think it's a good point, confusion one, and also just as, you know, test run, if you will, so that way we're not scrambling, and I just think it's too unreliable, you know, Wildwood's just too unreliable at this point, and we don't know what's going on, so I would agree that we just make the change for the primary, get out the cards and just as proposed.
The primary election is typically or historically a lot quieter than the state election, so it's a good trial run.
Yeah, I agree.
There will be some confusion on, we did some price quotes for signs to have mounted even at the Wildwood School, so if they do go there in error, it will direct them to the correct location. So I do think it's, it is a good idea to have a trial run at a quieter election.
Yeah.
State elections can be a little volatile and there's not a lot of incumbents running this year.
Yeah.
So it's a little more active.
No, I support that. Any comments, Mr. DePalma?
My recommendation would be use September and November. Why take, why take a chance, this way it's off your table, you don't have to worry about it. Any confusion or reorganization in each voting place can be done after the September of the election and then it's, it's off. But I would recommend right now where, why take a chance of comes November and there's no heat? no heat, now we got to scramble or you have to scramble and get letters out to everyone again and saying, oh, nope, nope, you're going to stay where you are. I'd prefer to see it, both elections handling it. Thank you.
Anything up here?
Thank you, Beth. Thanks so much for being here. You know, I too am prepared to support your recommendation, the manager's recommendation. Any hesitation I had kind of is erased when I think back to how quickly your office was able to arrange an election in June at the Shriner's Auditorium for all precincts. And, you know, by all accounts, it turned out just okay, just fine. So, you know, you were able to do that in short order. I have no reason to believe that you can't pull this off. And I like the idea that we have several months to promote this leading up to September, and then we have a few months after that to promote, you know, what we anticipate will be a larger turnout in November. But there'll be some consistency since the Wildwood's not available. So I'm prepared to support the proposal.
So I too am prepared as well. I think all the points have been made, but one thing that stands out, and I know people are basically insinuating the same thing, is that if there were to be any issues for the primary, they can be corrected for the actual election. So it's important that every resident has the opportunity to vote in both. I don't want to be mistaken or misunderstood. But if the change happens between September and November, and God forbid someone doesn't get to vote in the November, they've missed out on the actual election itself, God forbid they miss out on the primary, they still have the means to correct it and get the knowledge to make sure they get their November vote in. The only other suggestion that I would have, and the reason why I want to do both dates, is because at the primary, you could possibly, I would like to suggest maybe some signage or indication that you will also be voting here for the November election. So they have done a dry run and they know that this is where they're coming in November. So you can leverage that in-person, face-to-face to say, FYI, you're voting here again. You know, so that would give you another, you know, means of communication. It would, not to say that you wouldn't do follow-up reminders in some capacity, but maybe it will save some money for the town if you leveraging, doing some consistency with September and November. So, you know, I have, I have some concerns about the unknown of Wildwood and I, I think advertising and getting it out there and meeting your state requirements is paramount because you're going to have to be making these decisions and logging them with the state in certain time parameters. So I think it would just make it much smoother for the town if we just lock into a plan and just roll it out.
Okay.
I was just going to add that obviously I know, knowing you, knowing your office, you're going to promote the fact that people will be able to take advantage of, have some T-ball as well.
Well, we will be having early voting. The state has mandated that. So we will be having a week of in-person town hall, early voting. You'll see me come back to ask for schedule approval and things of that nature as we get closer. But, so there'll be many options for them to vote. Absentee as well as early voting, as well as in-person early voting. We are going to be required to be open the Saturday before the election for in-person early voting. So there'll be weekend hours. What those hours will be will be set by the board. So I will be back for you to approve a schedule. So we'll have plenty of opportunity to get the word out.
Does anyone else have anything else?
Only question I have for Beth is, we've given you our opinions. What's your recommendation? What do you, how, what would you feel? You're the one who has to deal with this, and I know it's crazy during elections. What would you feel more comfortable with?
I think it's better to be consistent, to do it in September, to get, start getting the word out now. As you had mentioned, they, God forbid they don't get a chance to vote in the November election. And people do get confused and they don't remember what number their precinct is, or they know where they go. A lot of them don't always remember the precinct number. We do have people out there and I intend to have them out there, you know, guiding people to where their precinct is. Again, we usually do it at the door. We have, the board of registrars at the door. They usually help people know where they're going, how to navigate it, especially with, if we're going with this route, we're going to be navigating a precinct into this room. So there's going to be people watching records that's going to be there specifically to make sure people know where they're going and if they're in the wrong place to direct them to the correct place. So it should go well.
So something that comes to mind with that, and I know your office does a great job and I know John O'Neill does as well, but, you know, maybe that's something that you could look at. I know you have this precinct map, but maybe there's something that can be called out on the town's website or, yeah, or the town clerk's website with a link to say, like, do you know your precinct? Here's how you find out. You know, maybe some sort of educational messaging out there to help people kind of self-research any of those, you know, concepts to try and prepare for September, you know, in a more demonstrative way on the website.
We've done, I've worked with John and we've done some posting on Facebook and Twitter. And we do have a link to the State Department. Check my registration and it gives you all the information that you would need from your precinct number. We've used it several times this year actually because of the precincting, the precincting and the, when we had a town meeting, when I did my inactivation, to allow people to go online to see if they're active or inactive, in addition to postcards. So we do have, utilize that and I have it on my voting election's site.
Thank you. Another thing that comes to mind is this, you know, September will be a trial run for November, but both of these dates could be potentially a trial run for, you know, another future election where the Wildwood could plausibly be under construction, you know. And this may, you know, the new Wildwood project may, may or may not be at that site, but it very well could interrupt the 2024 election or 2026 or whatnot. So this probably won't be the last time that we're displacing those precincts from that location. So, you know.
So based on that, do you have anything else to add, Jeff?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. So is it your preference that we take a poll and vote as the board to?
I think it's a board to consider, isn't it?
There is a board to consider, yes.
Do you want to take that out of order now?
Yes.
So we'll move to that board to consider item out of order, which is voted to consider item number six, and that is to consider the request to relocate precinct three to the Aboutwell School polling location and precinct four to the town hall polling location for the state primary election on Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, and the state election on Tuesday, November 8th, 2022. Do I have a motion? Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Harry Dunn? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you, Beth.
Okay, at this time, we'll move into communications and I'll turn it over to the manager.
The first item under communications is a, an update from me with regard to the Wildwood School remediation. There was a Zoom session that a number of us participated in a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, specifically involving town council as well as insurance council, discussing the efforts to reach a resolution, a settlement on this case. Insurance council from MIA, Mass. Interlocal Insurance Association, has had some initial conversations with council from Atlantic Oil Company. They're the purveyors of the oil that led to the breach. And they appear to be willing to engage in discussions about a settlement. And you know, our cap with MIA is $500,000. That's the amount that they, that they're paying out per our insurance. There are a couple of categories of coverage outside of that, one being the replacement of the oil tank, I'm sorry, the septic tank. And the other, I believe, is, is the leaching field. But MIA is going to be looking to recover $500,000 from the provider. And then separately, we've been asked to provide the town's costs, any costs that we bore directly as a result of this incident. Given that the estimated overall cost that we're getting from our LSP is just over $1 million, it appears at this point that the town, at least at the moment, could be on the hook for something in the order of $945,000. It's a rough estimate at this point in time. So clearly, we're going to be seeking to pursue that sum of money. And then just by way of some background there, we'll be looking to have a conversation with the finance committee later in the month to seek funds from the reserve account to cover the costs of the remediation that are, have taken place to this point and that are ongoing. Next, under communications, is another memo from me with regard to rail crossing, ongoing discussions with the MBTA. This conversation took place on June 2nd. Participating from the town was Chair O'Connell and myself, along with the representatives from the MBTA. Some of the things that they highlighted were that the improvements to the ballast, which is that crushed material around the rail, rails themselves, as well as signal circuitry on all 11 crossings, has, that work has been completed. They also noted that there were five so-called bungalows, which are these little buildings next to the crossings that have some electronics to control the gates and signals. Five of those bungalows do not have air conditioning, which affects the operation of the signals and gate, gate arms. They have installed AC in three of those bungalows, but two of the bungalows, one being at Woburn Street and the other at Kilmarneck, they're just too small to accommodate the AC. There was also a review of the latest incidents at some of the crossings. There was particular discussion about an incident that took place on the Lowell Line. There was a disabled commuter train that prompted individual passengers to disembark for another train. And apparently, some of those folks were on private property. Mr. Mueller, Mike Mueller, who is a representative from the MBTA, said that that is not the standard practice and they would be, he'd be looking into that further and having conversations as appropriate to make sure that's addressed. And then separately, Mr. Mueller noted that the report on the incident back on January 21st involving the fatality of Roberta Sosil Devine, that report has been finalized and it'll be released to the MBTA's safety committee. This safety committee is expected to meet in July. They don't yet have a firm date, but will be advised of that date. It is a public meeting and they were not able to provide any details in advance of, of that meeting. And then finally, they noted that the Federal Transit Administration had made some requests for additional information regarding their proposed platform design in North Wilmington, at the crossing in North Wilmington. They have completed the information that they need to provide to the FTA. We were informed that this design is similar to a design of a platform in Bourne, town of Bourne. So at this point in time, the timeline remains uncertain as to when the FTA will, will take any further action or comment on this plan design. Next is a memo from me with regard to the appointment of a treasurer-collector. At the time of this writing, Beth Lullamand, who is currently the Assistant Finance Director, was promoted to the position of treasurer-collector. You know, certainly unfortunately for the town, fortunately for her, I guess as it turns out, she received a, an unsolicited offer by another community to serve as a finance director in that community. And it was really an offer she couldn't refuse for a number of reasons. So she is taking another position, but I think she's with us for another three weeks or so, which is certainly unfortunate for the town. She was very skilled, has a lot of experience in municipal finance, about eighteen years, most of that working for the town of Ames, city of Amesbury, the last four or so with, with us. But, you know, certainly wish her well. You know, I think this really speaks to an issue that we've heard about for the last several years now, about just the challenge of recruiting people in, in the municipal sector for these skilled positions, whether it's IT, whether it's finance, administration, for any number of reasons. They're just, you know, a lot of people are retiring. There isn't the draw that there had been in, previously. You'll recall that Governor Polito headed up a committee starting a few years ago, looking into what steps can be taken to try to encourage people into the public sector, into the municipal sector. When we had our financial management assessment that was done a few years ago by the Collins Center, the individuals involved in that at the time, Tony Teresi and Fred Kingsley noted, as they were making recommendations to the town, that we needed to be mindful of the challenges that communities across the Commonwealth are facing in terms of recruiting finance folks. So in some respects, it doesn't, it's not surprising, but it's certainly unfortunate. But we will be reposting the position and I've had some conversations with Brian Perry, who's the finance director, and certainly Susan Inman, the assistant town manager, HR director about our Plan B at this point.
Jeff, just real quick through the chair, will we be posting for both of those positions now or?
Yes, we'll be posting for both the treasurer-collector position as well as the assistant finance director.
Thank you.
Next is a memo from Brian Scoughton, who's the Assistant Public Buildings Superintendent regarding the town's receipt of $32,868 in MIA credits. So again, MIA is the town's insurance company, covers our property and casualty, auto, workers' comp, all the major insurances. During the course of each fiscal year, MIA offers a number of safety programs, whether it's online or otherwise, really encouraging communities to participate, to obviously avoid losses. And Wilmington, as you know, historically has been very involved in that process. We have a safety committee that Brian chairs and I just want to give kudos to Brian and the committee for taking on the challenge here and getting the word out so that employees in all the various departments have participated in these safety programs. And for that, we've been awarded this $32,868 in credits, some of which can be applied towards our premium going forward. I would also, also note that Wilmington continues to be within the top 10% of the 400 entities that MIA represents in terms of its ability to generate these credits. Next is communication from Deborah Wagner from the, she's the Director of Accounts from Mass. Department of Revenue. And she's providing information to the town about the Shawshank tax excess and deficiency balance. This is the equivalent of free cash for regional technical schools. And that amount is $1,615,966. Next is correspondence from Michael Newhouse, who is the attorney representing the property owners at 79 Nichols Street, the so-called Baldwin Landing property. And he is indicating that the firm is looking, and the property owner is looking to revise their design of the apartments and at present are looking to propose a three-story building. As you may recall, the original plan called for As you may recall, the original plan called for four single-family homes and then a four-story apartment building to accommodate 16 homes. And then he also is indicating that there's a willingness to meet with the town officials to talk about the prospect of a five-unit, five single units on a conservation subdivision, which was originally proposed a couple of years ago, as I recall. So we will be reaching out to Mr. Newhouse to schedule some time to talk about that prospect.
Yes.
Yes.
Reading this letter from Attorney Newhouse, it does show that he's looking for possibly a three-story building. It doesn't say building, it says buildings, pluralized. How many would he be looking for? Again, we go back to, we look at this site, yeah, it is a large piece of land, but most of it's wet. It doesn't belong, even, even a three-story building doesn't belong there. And I hope that we can rectify this with some single-family homes. This is a residential area, and what's going to keep anybody from saying, I got an acre and a half of land, why don't I put up a four-story, 20-unit building? It's not just one location. But I, I would encourage the town to try to discourage the three, the three-story buildings that he's made reference to in this, and maybe sit down with them on single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is a memo from Valerie Gingrich, the Director of Planning and Conservation, again with regard to 79 Nichols Street. And she notes that the, she basically highlights the history of this most recent proposal in terms of the 40B project, noted the site visit on May 31st and concerns that were expressed by the neighbors who were present at that time. She also notes that Michael Busby, who was the representative from the Mass Finance Agency, Housing Finance Agency, did express some concerns at the site visit, that a four-story building would likely fail the design review requirements of their review. And in fact, as was borne out in later communication, requested that the applicant revise their plans. He's also suggesting that the town refrain from commenting since once any revised plans are submitted, then the, the town would have presumably 30 days at least for, to comment on whatever the new proposed plan is coming forward.
So I would like to just offer some additional comments to that. So just to kind of summarize for anybody that might be here or listening at home. At the previous meeting, there was a suggestion that residents send in any sort of letters or emails to the town manager's office. Some of us as selectmen have received emails directly or letters directly. Anything that I have received, I have provided to Bev. If any of you have received, you've either shared it with me or you've provided it to Bev. So I want to make sure that residents that are here and at home realize that anything that we've received individually or collectively, we have compiled together. Even though as a result of the site visit with Mass Housing that they've asked the applicant, applicant to go back and revise the plans, those letters that have been received will still stand and they will still follow the package in. So rest assured that those letters were not just forgotten because there's a new comment period, those will go along because some of them talk about the design, some of them talk about just the overall viewpoint on the project, that neighbors have deep concerns and they get into their own individual specifics. So those will travel with the final package that goes in to Mass Housing. As a result of the request for the plans to change, as has been conveyed by the manager, they are going to reset the deadline for the town to, to supply comments. In addition, the manager's already said it, but I just want to say it as a sitting member of the board, there is a request for a meeting to discuss the single-family option, which I had requested during the meeting, the Board of Selectmen meeting, for them to see if they could revisit it. I know other people, and obviously Selectmen Department just now, expressed the desire for them to look at it. That doesn't mean that that project's going to work because there are other regulatory factors with the town. There are reasons why it didn't go through originally when the applicant had put it through. So because there is a meeting, does not guarantee that that's going to have a favorable outcome. The goal is just to get people back to the table, to see if there can be any meeting of the minds, to see if there's something that's more palatable for everybody involved. It doesn't guarantee the outcome. So I felt the need to step forward and say that, that this board is, is, is doing what we can while also stating that we do not, this is technically not in our purview from a permitting standpoint or a regulatory standpoint. The reason why we are taking action is because we see it as a, as a resident factor with being asked to do the comment letter through Mass Housing, and we're trying to represent the town in that regard. And I thought that it would be beneficial to kind of summarize that, in case people are picking this up for the first time, that they understand what's going on. Someone may have saw, have seen the meeting last week, but, last time, but didn't see this, vice versa. So I felt from a communication standpoint, it made sense to share that. So thank you for the indulgence to get that out there.
Madam Chair, just with regard to the emails and various communications that have come in from residents, certainly all of those communications have been focused on the existing proposal, which was the five single units and the 16 units within a four-story building. Depending upon how dramatically the new version is changed, it, I think it may be advisable for residents who wish to comment, to, to comment to that particular proposal because certainly there are some comment elements, I think, that have been talked about by many of the residents, the traffic issues. But I think the, the concern I would have about simply including the existing communications in the comment letter on the new version is that they may get somewhat, and I can't speak for the Mass Housing Finance Agency, but if, if they're pertaining to the former project, they may be not taken with as much seriousness as if, as, as opposed to having them tailored to whatever that new version is.
I can, I can understand that comment. My concern is, is that if someone took the time to pen that letter and they didn't hear this meeting, or they didn't send a new letter to go through, that any of their comments regarding traffic and just other, you know, environmental concerns, things of that nature, those, those letters won't be in there to view points beyond just the building style. There were questions regarding schools, there were questions regarding sidewalks, there were concerns regarding environmental, there were concerns regarding traffic, there were, there were other concerns beyond just the building style. So I, I hear what you're saying, so either we need to proactively contact those people and tell them that their letter needs to be revised. I'm just concerned that we put something out in the last meeting inviting people to comment, the residents had no say that Mr. Busby was going to kind of reset the rules and reset the comment clock and reset the request, that I feel that the residents may be at a disadvantage that if their letter, because it didn't pertain to the original applicant's design, you know, respectfully stated, I don't, I don't feel good about taking those off the table. I agree with you, it might confuse the issue, but either we need to reach out to the, the people that submitted those letters and ask them to resubmit, or, you know, I don't know how we want to take this, but you know, if someone submits something to the town in line with what was requested at the last meeting, I'm uncomfortable with taking those letters and just doing nothing with them. I'm not suggesting you're saying do nothing with them, but where, where do they go? I mean, we can't.
Right, so my, my thought had been, and I have, have something in draft form, to send to each of the individuals that, that submitted comments, just explaining the situation. It serves two purposes. One, informing folks that there has been a change, that the owners are, are being asked to submit a revised plan, so that residents are aware of that, and also encouraging them to, once that revised plan has been submitted and that information is made available, to comment on that particular plan.
So that sounds reasonable.
Certainly I can do e- either one, if the board would prefer to have the other, the existing letters included with the comment letter that goes out on the new plan, we can do that as well. I just think it is probably more relevant to MHFA to have letters that are specific to whatever is on the docket at that time.
I hundred percent agree with you. I'm just concerned, you know, like I said, about the other, you know, the fulfillment of the residents submitting a second revised letter. And if John or Jane Smith submitted it, they put a lot of other noteworthy things, but because it pertained to the first design, it's not applicable, but yet they never did part two, you know what I'm saying? And so I, I don't want to be perceived from a public standpoint that we did not carry through on what we offered out at that meeting that was very well attended. We also don't know when the revised plans are going to come in and how they're going to fall in line with our meeting sequence. So I'm concerned how those revised plans are going to get in the hands of those same people. So I think we'd have to coordinate, when your letter goes out, will the revised plans be available to go in with that letter? Or are we going to be able to have a Board of Selectmen meeting and have them come back in and present the plan publicly like they did before? So this has to be orchestrated, in my opinion, and I know that there are unknowns, and I'm spotting people, you know, live here, but I feel an obligation to the residents to package up this communication in a way that's understandable to them, so that these residents, or any resident, not just the abutters, but all residents have an opportunity to re-participate or participate for the first time, if they so choose. And I feel that we're responsible now to follow up on that communication. If any letters that were submitted for the part one of this, you know, may be somewhat not applicable anymore, I feel that we have an obligation to try and get them the information to resubmit and also the revised plan. So I don't know who would be responsible to talk to the applicant, to find out when they can get a revised plan, that they're going forward with their application with Mass Housing, so we can kind of figure out how this is going to roll out. And I'd certainly defer to my board members, I don't, I'm not unilaterally making this decision. If anybody has any comments, I'd, I'd welcome the feedback.
Madam Chair, to start out with, I will guarantee you, before 10 o'clock tomorrow morning, everyone in that neighborhood will know what's going on. These people are very connected with each other on issues. And I do agree that a lot of people put a good faith effort in to sending these letters in with their, either their opposition to this project. But as Mr. Hall just stated, this is a new design. I would feel stronger that the residents sent in a second letter, so that Mass Housing knows that they are addressing the new proposal that's being forwarded instead of the old proposal, and thinking that, well, this is no longer here anyways, so we're just going to disregard. I don't know if, I don't know their policy or procedures, but just, I'm concerned with that they would all be disregarded and be left with nothing there from the residents that are the most concerned about this. So I would, I would ask Mr. Hall to do what he just planned on doing, sending out a notice to the, to the, anyone who's responded. And also, there are two gentlemen in the audience right now from the area, and as I said, before tomorrow at lunch, every neighbor in that neighborhood will know what, what is going on. And I, I believe that they would appreciate a notice from the town manager with a quick explanation on why we're, they're eventually going to have to rewrite a letter because the proposal was changed.
I appreciate those comments. When I had made my original comments, I was unaware that the manager's office was going to send out that correspondence until he just filled us in live. And then respectfully, I know there are two gentlemen here, but I just don't want to be putting that responsibility on residents to do the communication that the town should be doing based on what we rolled out. So I, I'm sure they will communicate, but you know, my role here and my feeling is that I do not want any resident that has, feels that they're, they're, have something to say about this, or that they are for or against it, to feel that some way the town misled about proper communication, or how things were going to be handled, or that someone wasn't in the know because we changed the game plan and didn't let anybody know about it. And you all have families and probably work full-time, so it's not necessarily your responsibility to do the administrative work of the town. So.
Just one other quick thing.
Sure.
When this development first arose, I was in contact with one individual down there, and I got a call from him at about 11 o'clock the next morning, and he had sent, he had walked his neighborhoods and sent out 175 letters to everyone that he could. So with the town communicating with them, and them communicating with themselves, I believe that the word will get out. And I do appreciate your words on that, and again, this was the first I heard of it, but having, having the town manager send, send out a notice, however he wants to do it, explaining the situation in brief contents, would be, you know, acceptable. I, I think it would be very nice of the town to do. And then with what they do themselves, will, everyone will know what is actually being proposed and what they have to do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg was first, so I'll defer. No, it's okay.
I'm happy to.
Okay. No, I was just going to say, in, in Mr. Newhouse's letter to the chair, you know, he says that they're happy to come in and, and discuss this. So I think that would, I think this is all a great idea with the, the email, but I think we should have them back in if, you know, the timing lines up. I think that would probably be the easiest thing to do, and that would be my recommendation. You know, whether it's in addition to the letter, but I think if we get them back out here so people can, you know, to see it, that would probably be the best. And I know it's, it's, you know, like he mentioned here, the timeline with submission on, on their end, but if we can get it in, I think it would be a good, good idea to do so.
Thank you for that. I think the key is that, you know, they're relying on their engineer to do their plans. So when they get the plans in, how does it coincide with the Board of Selectmen meeting? Are we going to be able to come to the public with it? And how it relates to the deadline to get the comments in? So we have to have a plan for public, and we have to have a plan if we can't get a public session going, you know, how we're going to at least communicate.
I would, just to follow, I would, if we could, I would recommend going back to them with the next, you know, Board of Selectmen meetings, the next two, and just see if they can attend it. I mean, I don't know what their timeline is, but to see if we can at least give them those dates and see if maybe they can back into that without knowing what their timeline is. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Thanks so much. I appreciate your transparency on this. This is certainly well thought out, and I totally agree that we want to be, you know, crystal clear for folks that are busy, that are obviously passionate about this project one way or another, so we want to make sure we're crystal clear. The question I have is that, you know, when, when we're contacted by residents, I want to make sure I'm giving out the right information. We will, we as a town will announce when the right time to communicate, you know, what I'm trying to avoid is a person writing another letter, and then a proposal comes and they're going to have to write another letter, you know? I don't doubt for a second that there are some that are willing to do that, but I'm just trying to save them some angst. So I think we need to be clear about, you know, the fact that the letter indicates that their willingness to speak with the town, once that, and obviously it sounds like tonight, that the town is obviously willing to speak to them, when that meeting takes place, as my colleague just said, potentially at a future Board of Selectmen meeting, then the proposal, the new proposal would be fully presented, and then it would be appropriate to comment. Because I don't want anyone to feel like they have to stay up tonight and, and write a letter, because I would hate for it to have to be revised yet again, once the, the meeting takes place, the presentation is given, and then Mr. Busby from, from Mass Housing says, okay, now you can comment. So I just want to make sure, and I don't doubt it for a second, that the town is crystal clear on what the timeline is. And it sounds like it's sufficient. It sounds like we're going to get 30 days from whenever the proposal is, the next revised proposal is given to Mass Housing. Am I correct in saying that?
What I, Madam Chair, what I would int-
What I, Madam Chair, what I would anticipate is, the proponent, once they have prepared their revised design, will submit that to MHFA, and then that will prompt Mr. Busby from MHFA, and, to notify the town. And separately, I would anticipate that, that we would receive that revised plan as well, and also from MHFA. And just as was the case previously, that will start the clock again, that we will get a letter from Mr. Busby noting that enclosed is the revised plan for 79 Nichols Street. The town has up to 30 days to offer comment. And then, you know, we would kind of go through a, perhaps a process similar to the one that was conducted previously. So when we receive that notice, we can, you know, communicate via social media, the notice, the fact that, you know, we have received this revised plan, and this communication from MHFA. And, you know, depending, again, depending upon when that is, will dictate, and, you know, when, or whether there's an opportunity to have, have a selectmen's meeting sync up with that comment period. So certainly one of the things that, you know, I think we can reach out to the proponents, to see if they would be willing to come in and have a separate conversation about this revised plan. And it's, that's the way I would envision this playing out.
Yeah, and that actually is stated in, in the Planning and Conservation Director, she says it right here. You know, once the revised plans are received by Mass Housing, Mr. Busby stated that he will send the town a new comment letter with a new comment deadline date. So that's the email that I had received directly. I don't know if you had received it at the same time, Jeff. Did you receive, or was it just to me?
I.
I think I had gotten it on the 18th, and then I forwarded it to you. So I think, if it, if it goes the same process, I'm going to receive the letter to my selectmen email, and then I had notified Jeff, and that's how we kind of pulled this together in short order. I check my email morning, noon, and night, every day, so there's no chance that it's going to slip through. And then as soon as I get it, you know, I'll know that the plans were submitted, and then we can kind of get this moving. It's really TBD, in terms of the timeline, but, you know, we obviously know that this is a very important matter, and that many people are interested in what's happening in this regard. So we certainly will do every, the commitment that you're receiving here tonight, is that we will do everything we can to communicate as soon as we know. So. So in the, just to be respectful of your time, because you're here, and we still have a long meeting, I'm going to kind of go out of sequence, and ask if you have any questions or comments while this is relevant now, just so that we can be respectful, because public comments will come at the very end of the meeting, and it's 8:20. So this is not necessarily the standard form, but I'd like you to state your name and address for the record, if you have any.
I would.
Comments, or questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, my question would be, when we do sit down, would we develop a, and have a higher level of planning on what they want to talk about doing? Is that going to be publicized? Is that going to be on the record somewhere? Or is it just going to be a, like an executive session, or something with these people? Will anybody else be involved?
It wouldn't be an executive session. I would anticipate myself and the Planning Director certainly being involved in that conversation with Attorney Newhouse, and perhaps Kristen Koster, there may be others, I don't know. But that, I wouldn't expect that to, to be a public meeting, per se.
And, and in this meeting, how will we all know what you came up with, or we'll just have to wait for the process to unfold?
Yeah, so certainly, that information will be provided to the Board of Selectmen, and would be either in the form of a memo, that would be brought forward at a subsequent selectmen's meeting.
Sure.
Yeah.
Any more? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, next on the agenda is another memo from me with regard to the training programs available from KP Law. You'll recall it, as part of their arrangement, they offer two training sessions per year, that are at no additional cost to the town. There's a schedule of programs, or sessions that are available. This was provided to the board. The programs that have already been provided, have been highlighted. I made a couple of suggestions for the board to consider. You certainly don't need to take action on this this evening. If you want to defer, I know Mr. Selectmen Kyra is not here this evening, you may want to wait until the 27th. So the sessions that I'm suggesting, acquisition and disposition of land, lease easements and restrictions, that may be beneficial to members of the Board of Selectmen and other boards, committees. And then effective enforcement for zoning, planning, health boards, and Conservation Commission certainly would be a topic, I think germane to those particular groups.
I'm going to take a, take a leap of faith here, and say that, that these two training sessions, I think, are very timely and applicable to a lot of what the town has experienced. And I can't speak for Selectmen Kyra, but I think that we would all be better informed and more knowledgeable about our roles, if we participated in any one of these. And so I think, you know, we could make a decision here as a board tonight, even in the absence of Selectmen Kyra, as to what the plan is.
I strongly recommend it.
Yeah. I think these are perfect.
I agree. I think they're very timely.
The town, the town.
You know, when, when we had planned the agenda, there were other things that were on here that we had taken off, based on Selectmen Kyra not being here.
Sure.
Which were contracts, dollars, things of that nature. I decided to leave this on, because we need to continue conducting business, and kind of get things going, for people to be working on in Town Hall, to get things situated, and other affiliates. So I don't have any objection with proceeding with deciding on this tonight. So. Would anyone like to, do you want a motion on this, or do you just want to?
Yes, this is actually on a board to consider.
Want to consider. So it's number 12. So do we want to take this out of order?
Yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adopt the scheduled training, as itemized by the manager for KP Law for fiscal year 2023?
So moved.
Which has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Please. Yeah, so just, this would be just the two subject matters, and the dates and time would be worked out later, obviously. Is that correct?
That's right.
So obviously, Mr. Kyra would have input there. So.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next under board to consider is a memo from me with regard to Maple Meadow Brook Monitoring Wells. So the, part of Olin's efforts to address the so-called data gaps that have existed for some time now, in terms of trying to establish the boundaries of the NDMA contamination. This area, it's actually near Town Park, and the Middlesex Canal over by the Butters Row Treatment Plant, there's a wetland area there. There were 18 wells that were initially established, they're monitoring wells. 16 of them are actually in the wetland, two of them are on high ground, so to speak. And so the memo is just informing the board about the request that has been made by Olin and their consultant Woods Group, essentially to use this so-called Marsh Master. It's an amphibious vehicle, kind of has caterpillar-like tracks to it, that apparently has been used in other locations, such as the Everglades, to access sensitive areas. The intent would be to use this vehicle to get into this area, to actually do some ongoing monitoring of these wells. GeoInsight, our environmental consultant, did provide comments to EPA. Some of those comments included, to the extent that this goes forward, obviously trying to be sure we, that they minimize the impact to the wetland area, making sure that this Marsh Master is clean before it arrives on scene, to avoid any kind of invasive plants or species being transferred into this wetland area. Developing procedures and policies, document that would address how to deal with any kind of spill issues that may occur, and certainly preventing those kind of things. So EPA, I think, is, at this point, is reviewing comments, and will make a determination. Next is communication from EPA, community update. They, as many of you know, have engaged in this effort to revise and develop this community involvement plan. There were some virtual sessions that were done involving members of the public, as well as town officials, to try to garner input on what we would like to see in terms of EPA's engagement, and getting the word out, so to speak. They also, in this notice, provided some general information about where things stand, in terms of efforts to remediate the site. We have communication from Selectmen Kyra to the board with regard to the last meeting of the Town Hall School Administration Building Committee. That meeting took place on June 1st, to review the options for citing on the former Swain Parking Lot green area. There was one option that was proposed, to locate the building on the front of the property, right off of Middlesex Ave. It infringed to some measure on the green space, but was largely in the parking lot area. This option would result in a net loss of 14 parking spaces within that area. The second option was to place the building at the rear of the parking lot, right up against the embankment, near where the Bazell Senior Center is currently. This option would result in a net gain of 57 parking spaces. One of the things that was expressed as some measure of concern, was the location, the proximity of this new building to the Bazell Center would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 33 to 35 feet away. But ultimately, the committee voted unanimously to direct Johnson Roberts, our architect, to pursue further design of the building, located at the rear of the parking lot. There's also some discussion about the, holding a public forum on July 13th. And the next item is a memo from Assistant Town Manager, HR Director Susan Inman. She covered the Senior Center Building Committee meeting, which took place on June 8th, last week. It actually took place at the Senior Center. There was discussion about options for exterior finishes, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing elements, and roofing material. Ultimately, the committee authorized Dietz and Company, the architect on that project, to pursue design with clapboard and stone exterior, mix of asphalt and metal roofing, and a variable refrigerant flow heat pump system, which uses electricity for heating and cooling. Previously, the...
Okay, so I guess that, yeah, that takes care of that.
So Jeff, if it's okay with you, I'd like to recognize Susan, who's here. I know I'm spotting you, not letting you know I'm going to recognize you, but I'm going to do it anyway, is that you were kind enough to take it one step further regarding the technical issues that were happening at the last meeting. So if you'd like to convey to the public what actions you've taken with your team, to do a video and broadcast that, that would be welcome and appreciated.
Many of you have seen our owl that tapes our meetings. The owl was used at the Senior Center. It's a great tool, except when you're doing a presentation like we were, having boards and everything, it doesn't really focus right in on the board. We did tape the meeting with the owl, and the audio did not come through that night, for just a reason unknown. I think there was a resetting of that machine, due to a power outage or something, and we have to reset it. So George and I talked, and I said, why don't we recreate the meeting, but we'll just do it through the minutes, and we'll set it up with a Zoom, so everyone can see the presentation. So you'll know, I sent you all an email separately today, to have you look at that on the website. I also think this is the public's opportunity to really see and hear all the work the committee did to get to that point of pushing at least one option forward, to get to a cost, you know, product that's going to be costed out, to give us some numbers toward a past project, if we can get it to town meeting. So, so just to inform everybody, it's on our website. Take a look at it. It's a shorter meeting, so you'll have a little less time commitment. We pared it down to just the minutes. George and I discussed everything that was discussed at the meeting. We showed you all of the presentation materials, and if it's not there today, definitely will be up there tomorrow in terms of the presentation. And the minutes are in draft right now, and those will be added very shortly, too. So everything should be there for you to garner, everything that went on at that meeting. And thank you for letting me say that, because I do want to have people see it.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. And then, while we're discussing that, as we think about, you know, as, you know, and I'm just kind of throwing this out there for consideration, I know that you have the Senior Center meetings, and then you have the school admin and Town Hall discussions. I'm assuming at some point before we have a special town meeting, that it may make sense to have a presentation to the Board of Selectmen at some point prior to that, so that in case someone isn't watching those individual meetings, that we've, we've offered a Board of Selectmen presentation, because some people just watch Board of Selectmen meetings, they just watch school committee meetings, or they just watch, you know, what is of interest to them. I do believe, we, you know, collectively, we need to do everything we can to market these projects, for better or for worse, if someone's for or against. We're not, you know, obviously, I'm supportive of these projects, but I understand others may or may not be. But it's, I see this as an opportunity to inform voters proactively before the big ask, which is the special town meeting for either one of these projects, that it may make sense, I think it does make sense to have them in, doesn't have to be the same night, but have them in for a presentation to the Board of Selectmen at some point.
To just add to that, it was kind of a happy accident, this happened, because in looking at both types of meetings, in terms of getting information, I thought this one was a little more succinct, in that we had everyone's comments, we were able to organize it and frame it, in a way of like, what would people want to know? What would the ask be? How did we get to this point? And watch it for yourself, and I'd love some feedback, but I, I kind of looked at it and thought, it is a better, and I hate to say just marketing, some people are going to vote against it, and that's okay, too. But it's a great way to put information out there, I think, because it really, it seemed to me more 360 of the whole process.
Does anyone have any other comments to add on that?
Right. Next, under Communications Correspondence, from Michael Babino, Transmission Arborist from Eversource, just noting some tree cutting and pruning that will be going along, going on along their utility corridor. No specific sites are identified at this point, but it will be happening throughout town. Also, we have communications from Verizon about some changes in channel lineup. All this information has been provided to...
All this information has been provided to Verizon FiOS subscribers.
Okay, moving on to Board to Consider, we did take up item number six, which was already discussed with the town clerk for the polling location, so the Board to Consider item number seven.
The Board to Consider item number seven is a request to change the name on a flammable license from DSM, DSM Coating Resins Inc. to Covestro LLC for property located at 730 Main Street. The recommendations from the fire chief, and also recommendation from, let's see, the fire chief, and we got one other recommendation here. From Karen Rassus, the assessor, both are recommending approval. So this is just a name change. It would require a vote of the board and the signature of the Chair of the Board.
Okay, questions, comments, or a motion to grant the request?
Quick question. Just Karen had mentioned in hers that she would be interested to know the details, ownership of the name change, as it could change their business classification. Did she get that information, do you know?
I do not know whether she has received that yet, but we can certainly...
Just, I would just ask that we follow up on that to make sure that they do respond to her on that. Otherwise, I'm, I have no issue.
Do I have a motion to grant the request to change the name?
So moved.
Which has been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is the Board to Consider approving the sale of town-owned land located on Pershing Street, map 77, parcel 36. This is off of Federal Street. It was voted at the most recent town meeting. We went through a similar process, or we go through this process each time property has been approved for sale at town meetings, does require the approval by the Board of Selectmen in order for us to issue a request for proposal, or, if the Board so chooses to do that here, we would plan to issue this RFP in addition to reissuing the one for the Lake Street property, which you recall was done previously.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the sale of town-owned land located at, on Pershing Street? Map 77, parcel 26, is voted at the annual town meeting of April 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Which has been made in second at any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is from a memo from...
Students.
Sorry, this is the request of the Wilmington Sons of Italy and Wilmington Band Parents to use the Swain School parking lot on Saturday, September 20th, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, for the purpose of conducting a yard sale to raise funds. The initial rein date was actually September 24th. That was, created a conflict there. Revised rein date is October 1st.
So Jeff, I, I don't know if it was just a misspeak, but I have September 10th. Is it September 10th?
It is September 10th. Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah. So that's okay. So September 10th. Any conflicts or any issues at all?
No, the only, the only minor issue on September 10th, so the rec department has a scheduled event, a trip, and typically, the bus picks folks up at the parking lot there, and residents park their cars around, along the back edge of the parking lot. I don't anticipate that will be an issue, but other than that, it's good.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to grant the request?
I'll make motion to grant it.
Second.
Motion been made in second at any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Now Jeff, your office will let Karen's office know?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The next memo is to the board from Brian Perry, the Finance Director. This is something that is done on an annual basis, where he references the amount of money the town has received in grants during the current fiscal year. He notes that the town has received $2.3 million in fiscal '22. The schools received $1.25 million in state and federal grants for educational purposes, another $1.28 million in multi-year grants for COVID relief. Specifically, and this is just for, most of this is just for this particular fif, this year, but there's been a variety of grants received. The Arts Council, $9,000. Board of Health, $5,000. The DPW Engineering, $1,084,500. DPW, the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, $75,000. Maya, $9,163,93. The Water Department, the Environmental Protection Agency, DEP, $99,696. Elderly Services, $48,540. Fire Department, $15,92381. The Library, $36,330. Also, a separate amount to the Library and Cummings Grant, $50,000. Police Department, $34,999. The Police Department, separate grant, $7,750. Public Works, which is Chapter 90 money, $777,851. Veteran Services, $41,236. And then, ongoing multi-year grants, U.S. Treasury, this is the ARPA money, $7,7,864. Fire Department, we're, this is the final year on the Safer Grant, $1,509,600. Police Department, 10-year grant, $300,000. Board of Health, Executive Office of Health and Human Services, $112,500. The Board is asked to authorize or accept these grant funds.
Make a motion to accept the grants received during fiscal year 2022?
Sure. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is Board to Consider the Process for Conducting the Town Manager Performance Evaluation.
So with that, part of this was going to include the goals and objectives for the town manager. In light of the fact that we don't have the full complement of the Board, I believe that we will have to defer any lengthy discussion on this until we have the full membership. The purpose of leaving this on the agenda to discuss this is that we need to be aware that the time period for the performance evaluation is coming, and so this is a means to be able to talk about this in public session as it's required. Each of you has a copy of the town manager's contract. Selectmen Kyra will receive the same. And for page five, section 14, it says, "Each year during the month of June, the Board will meet with the town manager to discuss and establish specific annual goals and performance objectives that it determines are necessary for the proper operation and welfare of the town and the attainment of the policy objectives of the town. The Board may further establish a relative priority among those various goals and objectives, and shall reduce said goals and objectives to writing. Said goals and objectives shall generally be attainable within the time limits specified and within the annual operating capital budgets and appropriations provided by the town and the events that have occurred during the applicable fiscal year. During the month of July each year, each member of the Board will submit a written evaluation of the town manager's performance to the Chairman of the Board or his or her designee using the attached, using the form attached hereto. The Chairman or his or her designee shall prepare a composite evaluation of the town manager's performance, which composite shall be considered and subject to amendments, voted on by the Board as the official evaluation of the town manager and made public. Set evaluation will include an assessment of the town manager's performance in meeting the goals and objectives that have been set for him by the Board for that fiscal year. Any meeting to consider the town manager's evaluation shall be held in open session in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, Sections 18 through 25. Unless the parties agree otherwise, the town manager shall be provided with a written draft of the composite evaluation at least 20 calendar days prior to any meeting scheduled to discuss such composite evaluation." And then, you know, with the goals and objectives piece, I had talked with Jeff about providing, you know, his goals and objectives to us, and then just to be cognizant, you know, of what he's working on, and that, you know, we, with that, as a Board, are not overloading the manager with another whole set of goals and objectives we need to kind of tie in together and, you know, understand, you know, the bandwidth of his role as well as his team. So that's where we're at. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything that you want to offer in this regard?
I think at this point, it probably makes sense to wait until the full Board is here. And certainly, there are a number of projects that are ongoing that require attention. The collective bargaining agreements, you know, we have five collective bargaining agreements that are in various stages of resolution. The finalizing the finance plan for the Senior Center and the town school admin, and then ultimately, obtaining authorization on both projects, maintaining a AA bond rating, which will be part of the process, because we're going to have to borrow as we go forward. I think also, one of the things that I'm looking to work on is establishing a working relationship with the school superintendent. Certainly, we have a, I think, a good working relationship. I think there's always opportunities for improvement there. Dealing with the issue with the Wildwood School, as you know, we're in the process here with the MSBA, but we have this interim need to find appropriate school space, and that is something that I'll be working on along with certainly the school superintendent and others. Yeah, so there's a, there's a number of issues on the docket here that I'm involved in.
So one suggestion would be to consider deferring any further discussion on goals and objectives to the next meeting, so we have the full complement.
Yes.
My other suggestion would be that perhaps some of the bullet points that you just said, perhaps we can have that included in a, in our packet, so that, you know, if we have anything that we may want to suggest, that we're aware of, you know, what's on the docket for you, so that, like I said, we're not overburdening, you know, with an excessive amount of additional product. The key is when you give performance goals and expectations, they need to be achievable. So to put another 10 things on there, I don't think is prudent and beneficial to anybody. And if there's something that, you know, people want to say, you certainly need to have the freedom and flexibility to do that. And then, in the package that has the town manager's contract, if you proceed past the signature page, which I know that many of you have already seen it and looking at this, but page one of seven is the performance appraisal system for the town manager, so that is to guide you to that. So the next meeting, we'll, we'll talk about the goals and objectives, we'll set up a timeline for this to be delivered back for me to put it together, you know, as the Chair. But I just want to bring this up in public session, so that this is kind of a first read, in that you all, you know, are taking this evaluation into consideration during your Selectmen work time to start completing this on your own behalf, to get it ready to be submitted. And certainly, I'll open it up for any questions and comments, but I wanted to bring this subject up in today's meeting, even though Selectmen Kyra isn't here, so that everyone is duly given notice that this is forthcoming. Anything?
Sounds good.
Okay, so it is a Board to Consider. Can we make a motion to defer this discussion to the next meeting?
Motion to table this discussion to our next meeting.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next item under Board to Consider has already been addressed. That was the training by KP Law. Then we have Committee Designees.
So, yeah, so this is a preparation memo that Susan Inman had put together, that you have a copy. Perfect.
So this outlines the state of the various committees. Commission on Disabilities meets monthly. Selectmen DePalmer is currently the representative, and as I understand it, is interested in continuing in that role. The Economic Development Committee also meets monthly. There is a vacancy right now from the Board on that. And having a bylaw committee, maybe one final meeting, so there's no assignment needed at this time. The Library Strategic Planning Committee, they wrapped up their work within the last couple of years, and I believe that's a five-year effort, so there's no assignment needed at the moment. Open Space and Recreation Committee, no additional meetings needed, so there is no assignment required at this time. The Rink and Recreation Committee meets quarterly. Selectmen Kyra is serving as the representative on that committee. Senior Center Building Committee meets biweekly. Selectmen Micali is the designee. Town School Admin Building Committee meets biweekly. Selectmen Kyra is the designee. The MBTA Advisory Board meets monthly, and Chair O'Connell is the designee there. And then, the Wildwood School Building Committee, they have not met since, prior to the special town meeting. I expect that they will be resuming again. Currently, the designee is Selectmen Bendel, and Selectmen Kyra is the alternate.
So is anybody on the, on the Board, is everyone comfortable with where they see their name listed and what they're signed up for? You have not received any notifications from Selectmen Kyra indicating he's not continuing in his respective roles?
No.
Okay. So in light of the fact that we have an Economic Development Committee vacancy, I'm not going to pressure anybody to try and step forward for that, but I'd like to ask the Board to consider taking a vote on the names that we do have, so that we can memorialize that into the record, so that everybody knows their roles and responsibilities, and that these committees or Boards can be notified of who their Board of Selectmen representative is moving forward, so that people can feel officially transitioned on or off a committee. So I'd like to see that for everybody's benefit. So if someone is willing to offer that motion, it would be welcome and appreciated. Make a motion?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second at any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is a request of Tina Stewart, the Library Director, for the use of the Swain Green on Tuesday, August 9th, at 5:30 PM. This is, she notes, "The Boston Bruins and Mass. Board of Library Commissioners have teamed up to help the Massachusetts Kids Read all Summer as part of the Wilmington Memorial Library Summer Reading Program. I'd like to request the use of the Swain Green for a visit with special guests from the Bruins organization on Tuesday, August 9th, at 5:30 PM. There will be prizes, crafts, and games, blades. The Boston Bruins mascot will be joining, joined by Todd Uggely, the National Anthem Singer at the TD Garden. He will also read from his book, "The Adventures of Owen and the Anthem Singer." So the request, there's no conflicts that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant? Okay, do I have a motion to grant?
Provo. Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comments. Good evening. If you can just state your name and address for the record, please?
Madam Chairman, Kevin McGowan, 40 and Oak Street. Uh, I have a few comments, but before I make my comments, I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, with regard to the Owen property, it seems to be moving in, um, high gear. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the Massachusetts Department of Public Health issued a finding relative to the Wilmington Childhood Cancer Study. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I read that they attributed the childhood cancer to the Owen study and the wells.
My concern is justice for Wilmington, justice for those people. This project is going full steam ahead and the town has really gotten no financial compensation. And I believe that you, Madam Chairman, put the agenda together. And I just have a suggestion that you have an agenda item, a public hearing relative to the Owen site that might bring the town council in, the public in, hopefully the folks that were impacted by the childhood cancer and have a hearing and try to get to the bottom of getting some justice for the town of Wilmington. My personal question would be, can the town take this property by eminent domain, have the company clean it up? And the damages that a town would have to pay for an eminent domain taking would be a wash based on the damages that were inflicted to the town, having the well shut down and having the people in town impacted by the cancer. I was hoping that you would consider and put that as an agenda item.
What I would say in response to that is that I would, I will, I have noted your request and I'll take it under advisement. I would certainly want to speak to the manager and our legal team. I don't want to make any false promises to you. Um, you've put out, you know, a lot in that suggestion regarding eminent domain and obviously I would be, um, interested in, in talking about that with the appropriate people within Town Hall. Um, there's obviously risks associated with taking any property by eminent domain, um, you know, so I, um, certainly have noted your, your request.
And, uh, just a note, appreciate that. By no means am I an expert at eminent domain, but just piggybacking on that, as you know, I came maybe 10 years ago with, uh, statistics showing that, uh, the Wildwood Cemetery, uh, was deficient in plots. I think it had enough plots for like only 7% of the town's population and that was about 10 years ago. And so I was, uh, looking at that again the other day and I was considering the salt sheds that are off of Federal Street that abut the cemetery and I would like the town to take a look at, um, turning that property into, uh, an additional part of the cemetery and moving the salt sheds to the recycling center. One of the ideas that I had relative to the Owen site was that if we could, um, develop the recycling yard and take the ledge and the gravel and the good material there, level it off and bring that to the Owen site and clean that stuff totally up instead of a wishful thinking plan that they're gonna be able to take that site and, and have a clean site. Cause I don't see that site ever being cleaned without that material being brought out of there. Those are just a couple of things I wanted to suggest there.
I've noted that as well.
Relative to, relative to the eminent domain, at a past, um, town meeting, the town took property, I believe it was 64 or 67 Wildwood Street, which abuts the cemetery by eminent domain for $450,000. And I kind of calculated out based on the plan that's down at the, um, assessor's office and it appears that there'd be absolutely no problem getting three lots out of that property and, and so much as five lots. Now, the fact that the town is deficient on affordable housing makes that property a site that's a candidate for 40B project. Now, I say that because of the, uh, deficiency in valuation that the town took that property by. And, I mean, I look at little ranches that are selling for like close to $700,000 and I take a look at what these people, um, were told they were going to get, $450,000. And it seems to be a problem. And I, my question is, when the town is gonna appropriate a certain amount of money for an endeavor such as this and they go to the town voters and they ask for $450,000 and that's all they get, but then they're gonna be faced with a valuation that could be $2 million. Recently at the town meeting, I believe, uh, the town manager came before us and he was looking for $40,000 to knock that house down. And so when you go and you knock a house down and then there's a legal matter, a litigation matter relative to the deficiency in, uh, income and the voters haven't voted for that, I'd like to know, um, what the legal ramifications are, if you could even do that. And a couple of disturbing things that, um, I've recently learned of is that the town, when people are still living there, went and put a no trespassing sign on the property. And then in addition to that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hall, but the people told me that the lady was taken, there were a handicapped lady in the house and her sister's taking care of her and you went down there and you told them that they had to leave that house. They told me that-
I'm gonna interrupt you just in that regard because I will tell you that any of the legal proceedings that have been done have been done lawfully and they've been done in accordance with the eminent domain practices and we have been advised from our town attorney as to how to handle this through. We have had meetings in executive session. We have taken those votes. Those meeting minutes are not for public view at this point. It is an ongoing case. I can tell you that, um, everything that's being done, um, from the town side is being done so, um, in a, we're communicating with the parties. We are going about it in a lawful way. Uh, we are giving due consideration to the parties that are there. Um, the town does own that property, uh, now and we are working with the residents there to, uh, vacate that property in a timely fashion. So we're limited as to what we can say as it's a legal matter and, uh, those executive session, uh, meeting minutes and the contents of those meetings are private as they may impact the town's position in the legal setting.
Yeah, I certainly wouldn't want to, I certainly wouldn't want to impact the town's position and interfere with any legal matters. My only question is, I'm looking at the properties that are being sold for 40B, the Hayden property. I'm looking at the Howland property. I'm looking at the Eli property and I'm seeing $2 million, $3 million. I'm seeing multiple millions of dollars for pieces of property that are smaller than this property. And my only question is, you're, you're advancing to try to knock the house down. I don't think there's been any relocation costs given to the people and I don't know if it's a harassment issue going down there. I don't know.
With all due respect, there, there is no harassment and I, I am trying to give you the, the latitude to give public comments and do so in a respectful manner, um, but I would kindly ask that you don't cast aspersions and make false claims. Um, you were not present there to see any, you're get, you're, all that you are saying is hearsay. Um, to my knowledge, you weren't present there as well to see any of these acts that you claim to have taken place. So I would appreciate it if you don't-
I saw a picture-
Put false, put false statements out there about the town or even character assassinate our town manager and use the words of harassment or go, or make false statements.
I'm just asking the question, just asking the question if he was there and if he, if he told the people that they had to get out of there. And I did see a picture of a no trespassing sign there, so it's not like I'm inventing this stuff.
No, there, there, there have been legal proceedings that have taken place, but everything has been done so in a courteous and lawful manner. I understand that you and other parties may not be pleased with the outcome, um, but the town has, has not, uh, been derogatory or has, has not been disrespectful, uh, to anyone. You may not agree with the decision and you had that right to vote at town meeting to not support that article, um, but we are carrying out what the townspeople voted for at town meeting. There is a process, um, to ask somebody to vacate premises and that process has unfolded for better or for worse. Um, and I will tell you that the town has been working cooperatively with council for, um, the residents there to try and do this in a, in a, in a peaceful manner.
Yeah, um, I, I take no position one way or the other. I'm just a neutral party, but my concern is, my question is, if the value is so much more than what the town, uh, offered to pay-
That's one person's opinion.
No, I, I understand.
That's one person's opinion.
My question is regardless if it's my opinion or truth or fact, if by chance the property is worth, say, $2 million, okay, or 1.6 or whatever, and you only appropriate it $450,000, how can you take action if the people at town meeting didn't vote for the proper value? That's my only question.
Like I said, that is, that is your interpretation of what you perceive-
No, it's a question.
It is, but I will tell you-
I don't know.
I will tell you that I'm, I understand that what I'm about to tell you, you will not be pleased with the answer, but the risk of answering that question, I believe, would be detrimental to the town legally. I am not going to advise you on that because I would be teaching other people as to how to navigate against the town. And so my role sitting here is to assist the town in following out that request of town meeting and to answer your question, I think, would be putting the town at a legal disadvantage and I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to answer that.
Okay, I just didn't know if you knew the question or, I didn't know if you had, uh, council give you that answer yet.
Correct, and those, those discussions have happened in executive session, which are not yet for public release. By answering your question, I believe it would be ill-advised, um, because it would be detrimental to the town's position.
And, um, have you, have you considered, uh, taking the property that's being used for the salt sheds as additional cemetery space?
I'm not aware of any discussions that has not been taken up.
Is that, is that something that you'd, um, you'd be willing to take?
I have noted it here and I will certainly take that back.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Would you like to say anything further?
Um, no, the only, the only other thing that I was kind of bothered by was, um, we have an $875,000, um, fire engine that's been in two accidents. I brought this up at the town meeting and people didn't, didn't seem to want to listen to me. And then after that, it got into another accident and it's being brought to accidents. When we have, when we have multi-story buildings, uh, 40B projects that if there was a fire and it had to get rescued, a fire engine being out of service because it wants to go to an ambulance call or an accident, it's a tower truck. It's meant to rescue people from multi-story buildings and it's being used kind of as a Jersey barrier so no one plows into the, uh, rescue workers. And I don't know why the, I mean, when, when I look at construction sites, they have a, they have a special vehicle or something for that purpose.
Well, I would say to you, I would say to you, um, you know, I can understand that you have your opinions and I, and I'm not here to try and, um, tell you how you should think and feel, but I did have a personal conversation with the chief. Um, he indicated that all of his men and women used the proper procedure. I also had the same, uh, discussions with our assistant town manager, HR director, as well as our town manager, that proper procedure was followed, that all of our emergency vehicles in either accident case were appropriately parked, positioned and utilized for their given purpose at each of those scenarios and that, um, I, in speaking with Chief Kavanaugh, he said that unless you are in this business of being a firefighter or being a police person, to go out on those highways, how incredibly dangerous it is. And I believe that if they do not deploy those resources regardless of their expense in the manner that they do, there could have been major casualties there which would have included our own employees. And, you know, from his standpoint, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but what I summarize our conversation is, he would put a fleet of vehicles out there as a barricade if it meant that not one single person in his department was injured or killed. And as a layperson and as a taxpaying resident, I support that because they're in, in horrific situations that I can only imagine and so we can respectfully agree to disagree.
Yeah, I, I'll agree to disagree. It's just my opinion that it would be a horrific situation for somebody in a third or fourth story building, uh, trying to be rescued when we don't have a tower-
Correct. With all due respect, we also have a mutual aid agreement, so if our vehicles are out tending to something else, every city in town has our back and they would be there. So I feel confident we could do both.
I just don't, my, my personal opinion is a mutual aid department in another town wouldn't be here as quick as a Wilmington vehicle and a tower truck that's specifically for rescuing people at high, um, floors is needed for that purpose and there's other pumper trucks or other vehicles that could be brought out there instead of this truck driving around.
And I, and I, and I hear you loud and clear. We can have philosophical discussions all day long and we can-
It's just a matter of doing something about it.
There are statistically time periods that, you know, can a North Reading truck get to Balladvale Street quicker than our own truck that's, you know, in another part of Wilmington? So, you know, I'm going to defer to the police chief and the fire chief as to how they think they should deploy their resources and work with the town manager regarding any mutual aid agreements. Your comments have been noted. Um, I certainly appreciate them. Um, I understand you have your opinions. Is there anything else relative to the town, um, you know, that is applicable, uh, for tonight's agenda, um, or can we bring your comments to a close?
No, I think, um, I think that's about all I have to say.
Okay, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to announcements. I will start to my left if anyone has any announcements. Are you up? Okay, any, am I right?
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the, uh, the classes, 22, 20, 22 from both Wilmington and Washington. And that's what she suggested.
Uh, thank you. So, um, same thing for me in terms of offering my sincere congratulations. I wanted to just share that I was able to attend the dedication of the Decaden Corner at the top of Arlene Ave, um, on behalf of the board. I did extend my well wishes on behalf of all of you and the manager. Um, it was quite a, a fitting and appropriate occasion for Mr. Hayden and his family. Um, he certainly has a demonstrated, uh, personal and professional track record as well as many years of service to the town of Wilmington. Um, it was very well attended. I'd like to thank Lucy Maglia, um, and his team, uh, Patty and Mike, as well as, um, Department of Public Works, Police and Fire were there. Um, anyone else that I have not mentioned that all coordinated the effort to do that on behalf of the family? And I'd like to, uh, thank all of the members of the Board of Selectmen for supporting that, um, for Greg, for your efforts as well and for the residents at town meeting for seeing that that was approved. So I just wanted to, um, say that that was, uh, quite a nice event to attend and, uh, the, the family was very, very appreciative and grateful and wanted to, uh, have me extend their gratitude and appreciation to this board. Any new business?
Uh, I don't know if this is the appropriate time or not, but, uh, I'd like to see if through you, through the chair, through you-
Sure.
-that you can, uh, direct, uh, the town manager to send a very stern letter to our congressional delegation, uh, asking that they freeze the gas taxes until further notice. With gas going up as high as it is, the state's coffins are bulging with money. I don't believe it would hurt the state at all to, uh, relax the da, gas taxes for a short period of time. And I know a letter doesn't always go do anything, but at least they would see that we in Wilmington are concerned with the prices of fuel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So just to clarify on that, um, you know, I support what you're saying, but I want to be cognizant of the fact that we're a board of selectmen and we don't have all members here. Are we, are we looking to have the town express concern on behalf of the town or are you looking for a board of selectmen letter such that every member of the board would need to endorse that letter?
I just think it would be a town letter. Uh, I've had a- I've had a number of people have contacted me and asked if the town could do something. And, you know, I explained to them, a letter from the town is not gonna do much. Well, at least we in Wilmington are very, but it was something I promised I'd bring to the board tonight.
Jeff, any thoughts on past practice in, in these situations?
The board, you know, obviously has the authority to take whatever actions you would like me to take with regard to communicating with our congressional delegation. Typically, the board doesn't, you know, take on these types of issues, but it's not to say that you can't. I guess I would just want to clarify when you say relax, or free, so, okay, suspend. So you're, you're saying essentially that, and I don't know what the amount is offhand, but remove that, remove that amount for some period of time.
Right, yes, sir.
It's certainly the board's call.
Is it tied to a specific bill or something specific?
No, there's no bill right now, I'm sitting.
So I would say that, you know, we could discuss putting it on the next agenda to take it as a board to consider, you know, as a first pass so that people can, that have heard it here can do their due diligence on it and be familiarized with the Ts and Cs. And then that would also give a fellow board member who's not here an opportunity to weigh in on it, and then it would be transparent for the whole board. We could take a vote on it, and then you'd be doing your role of getting it considered.
Thank you. That would be perfect.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for new business?
I, I do have one item I just wanted to bring up, and I was going to, this went out a short time ago before the meeting, I'm just making copies for the board here. I'll read it into the record. So we had an incident brought to our attention from our billing company for ambulance services. And I wanted to make sure that people were aware of the circumstances. I know we've gotten a number of calls in, in my office today and, I think, Elijah, starting today. The town was recently informed by Comstar Ambulance Billing Service that on or about March 26, 2022, suspicious activity was identified on Comstar's computer system and network. Comstar is a vendor hired by the town to invoice individuals and/or their insurance provider for the cost of ambulance transportation and associated care. Patient information is securely provided by the town to Comstar on a regular basis to initiate billing for these services. Upon review of their computer systems and network, Comstar determined they were victims of a cyber attack which impacted their network. The news was disappointing as confidentiality, privacy, and security of data is a top priority for both the town and its vendors. Comstar notified the town of their intentions to issue letters to affected individuals. After consulting with legal counsel, the town conveyed its expectations for Comstar to provide, proceed with the notifications, but requested the opportunity to review the letter prior to its issuance and to receive advance notice of the mailing date. While Comstar has taken steps to issue these letters, they unfortunately failed to honor the two requests previously noted. During the latter part of the week of June 6, Comstar began mailing notices of this breach to affected individuals served by Wilmington's ambulance service in Massachusetts and multiple other states. If you have received a notice from Comstar Billing Service, please do not ignore it. The notice is legitimate and is intended to provide impacted individuals with advice on the steps to take to assist in protecting their personal information. Comstar has established a call center to address questions from individuals. The phone number is 1-877-587-4280. The call center is accessible between 9:00 AM and 9:00 PM Eastern Time, Monday through Friday. The town is in regular communication with Comstar about their responsiveness to these, those impacted by the cyber attack in addition to steps Comstar is taking to secure their computer systems and network. Since only Comstar has the specific details on information that may have been compromised, only Comstar will be able to answer questions. The town does not maintain this confidential information, which means that calls received by the town departments will be referred to Comstar. We will rely, we all rely upon electronic media for transactions of one form or another. The town recognizes and fully appreciates the concern about personally identifiable information and confidential medical conditions potentially being compromised. Unfortunately, cyber attacks continue to pursue access to restricted information across all business sectors. The town is monitoring Comstar's course of action closely to ensure that all impacted individuals are informed and that all questions are addressed as expeditiously as possible.
One question regarding this is, how long has Comstar been doing billing? So for example, I got one, you know, as a breach, and I was in an ambulance one time my senior year of high school, which was 31 years. So my question is, is how far back does this go? Does anybody know? I mean, I ever, but one ambulance ride, and it was off of an athletic field at the high school.
Well, they, when I came to Wilmington in 87, they were billing for the town at that time, so it's been a while.
Okay, that makes sense to me, because I'm like, jeez, I, I had to, I'm like, when did I ever take a ride? You know, and that was then, you know, so, okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to go back, just looking at the dates. I will not be present for the June 27th, as I have a work commitment, I'll be traveling out of state that week.
Okay. I just wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to important dates.
So important dates, Sundays through October 2, the farmer's market, Town Common Parking Lot, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. June 14, Flag Retirement Ceremony, Minuteman Headquarters, 6:00 PM. June 15, Town Hall School Administration Building Committee, Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM. June 20 is Juneteenth, Independence Day, town offices are closed. June 22, Senior Center Building Committee, Town Hall Room 9, 6:00 PM. June 27, the Board of Selectmen's Next Meeting, Town Hall Room 9, 7:00 PM. June 30 through, I'm sorry, yeah, June 30 through July 3, 4th of July festivities. Phone number 978-657-8081 for information, or you can use, funonthe4th.com is their email address. Town Common spectacular fireworks are on July 3. Family Day is July 2 on the Town Common. July 13 is Brush Drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Also, again, on the 16th, Brush Drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Board of Selectmen meet again on July 18, 7:00 PM, Room 9. June 30, uh, July 30, rather, is the Household Hazardous Waste Day, West Intermediate School Parking Lot, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
And our salute to service.
Thank you, just, if I may, real quickly, I just wanted to make sure we included for the public that I believe earlier this evening, we heard that there'll be potentially a public forum for the Town Hall School Administration Building on July 13. Just want to make sure residents had at least a month's notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, it's my pleasure to tonight's, present tonight's salute to service to resident Jim DeFeo, who is a retired member of the Massachusetts National Guard as a lieutenant commander after a deployment in Iraq during Operation Enduring Freedom. Jim has many of awards, including the Army Commendation Medal Second Award, Armed Forces' Reserve Medal with an M device, and the National Defense Service Medal, among other medals. Jim is a longtime member of the Boston Police Department and is the founder of Iron Horse Cassin and the One Last Run Foundation. Iron Horse is a Harley Davidson motorcycle hearse that offers veterans and law enforcement officers one last run during their burial service. Jim has also been extremely involved in many local nonprofits, including Wilmington's own Local Heroes. So tonight, it's my pleasure to give tonight's salute to service and thank Mr. James DeFeo.
Thank you, Mr. DeFeo, for your years of service, and thank you, Slav and Bendel, for putting that together. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
WCTV, connecting our community.